Are you ready, Jay, to take your notes?
I'm ready, yep.
Okay. So. Is this meeting supposed to be minutes?
Just the young'un.
That's, um. What's left for the, uh?
Oh, it's the Asbils.
Asbils, yep. And this is Asbils, Gibbs Road.
Yep.
That's three, that's worth a mail.
Looks like it.
Mail box was full by the look of it, yeah.
There would've been more if it was full.
Yeah, right, exactly. All right, so first order of business. Okay, this is open session, public meeting. Subject being recorded, videotape recorded. Air, image, and voice will be recorded for open meeting law. National General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21. This is Planning Board. Two fourteen, twenty twenty-three. All righty. So would you, anybody care to make a motion for accepting the minutes of the meeting?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
We got great minutes.
The great minutes.
They work great.
Okay, hearing nothing, I will ask you to vote. All in favor of accepting the meeting, say aye.
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 Aye, opposed?
Didn't even have to do a roll call.
Yeah, no, we don't have to do a roll call.
Sure.
Okay.
Sent an email to Neil's assistant.
Tune in when they were on, but never heard tack.
What was that for?
Uh, he wanted to get on the agenda probably to, I don't know why.
He, he called me last week and I said, you, we've placed his article on the warrant.
Yeah.
And he said, oh, that, you know, I think that was his main concern. He just wanted to make sure that it actually was on.
Mm-hmm.
And I said, it is.
Good, okay.
Did you email the agenda or was it only on?
This agenda?
Or was it only on my town government?
It was in the appointment on the town government website.
Right, okay. I just, I knew I had seen it, I just wasn't sure where I had seen it.
Usually, Thursday or Friday, I put it on there. And I'm not sure how the location got changed.
Right, 'cause wasn't it pretty much set up routinely for it to be?
Zoomed for the entire year.
Well, we have Linda.
What?
Lynn.
Two.
She, she called me last night and said, what are you doing with your meetings?
You know what's weird is normally, normally I go in and edit the Zoom link, 'cause it's this whole pile of gobbledygook and I knock it down to what you need. But I was snowmobiling all week, which was like six thirty in the morning till ten o'clock at night by then.
Right, you're like, Zoom link what?
So this is the Asbils. And Asbils for Mark. So we just need to file them in our files?
Yeah.
At this point?
And?
For the, for the roads?
And I can just say to Fred.
He signed it.
Yeah, I can just say to him again, you know, 'cause he, he, the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee meets, so I can just say, we've got these two roads, you're fine, right?
Okay.
Yeah, he signed it, so we're fine.
All right. Time to count the stuff we can do later. Otis from the ZBA, if you want to see that.
The ZBA?
Yeah.
Where's the round file?
It's sort of oblong, actually.
Is it?
Yeah. Quite round, but.
Paper, paper, no, no, they're always sending us paper.
Which one are you looking at, Jim?
God knows.
Turning point investments.
Do the ZBA applications require electronic drawings to be submitted?
Yes.
'Cause I got all the paper, but I didn't get the electronic.
Oh, well, it should've been sent by Lee and to the planning board. And I think that, um, I'm glad Lee, you know, gets your copy.
Yeah, 'cause I usually put it on the website.
We sent it to the chair, but Lee, he distributed it to.
Two seventy-five Central, this is the driveway.
Either one.
Send it to the planning board at ten.
This is so much better.
Eighteen. Yes.
Did you get the letter from Conservation about this? I wasn't sure if Mattie had sent it yet.
Is this two seventy-five Central Street?
Yep.
I think, I don't know that we have a new one. I know we have one from when he was there before.
Okay.
And I was gonna ask that maybe you take a second look at it due to the fact that he's adding land to it.
Oh, is it?
That, you know, dips way down, so.
Right, he, um.
This is the gas stations?
No, the gas, oh, this is their, they own this. The gas station owns this.
They're selling it.
I see. So that he can do this further down here instead of further up here?
Tim?
Yeah.
And that's what I called you about last night.
Oh, yeah, that and, and that our meeting was screwed up.
No, that came up as a matter of course. And I said, gee, I thought I looked at it and said it was in person.
Do we get one more copy of that?
No. Do you wanna? I looked at it digitally, 'cause Conservation got it, so.
So that's got a problem with Conservation?
Nope. No, the closest real wetlands are across the street. So, so he did ask us for an updated letter. I did look at it again and Mattie, if she hasn't, she will be issuing an updated letter.
Hearing until the eighth of next month.
Okay.
But we appreciate you doing that on the Conservation. It's better to have it beforehand than after.
Sure, I appreciate you insisting on it.
The bylaw insists on it.
Yeah, well, I, I appreciate you enforcing the bylaw.
So four by three sign. Well, is that conform? That doesn't conform.
Yes, there are things missing from.
Twelve square feet.
The sign plan.
Well, it's not a commercial zone.
No.
Freeze.
It's a residential agricultural, so I think the sign limit may be ten square feet. But here's, here's the more compelling question. The gas station's on thirty-seven thousand fifty-two square feet.
Mm-hmm.
And it has four thousand two hundred ninety-four feet over here that belong to. But is there green area to some degree?
Oh, by the gas station.
So if they sell that, are they making their lot nonconforming?
Well, it's nonconforming anyway, so it's more nonconforming.
Right. That's interesting.
It's really a postage stamp. I thought it was bigger than that. It's not, it's just an acre. Is that fourteen thousand? Oh, fourteen.
Fourteen two.
It's fourteen two.
It's got fifty-one thousand, so it's like an acre and a quarter, not even that, acre and a fifth or something like that, right? Forty, forty, forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty, is that an acre?
Oh, you mean between the two.
Between the two.
Yeah.
The lot precedes the, the lot's gotta precede four ninety-five and the readjustment of Lock and Row. Not the use.
Taylor Road.
Taylor, yeah.
Yeah.
Not the use, but, but the lot.
Right.
And so the lot was intersected by, bisected by Taylor.
Oh, Taylor got moved to make room for the next pair.
Yeah.
So it's cheaper for them to buy that lot than to put the driveway around the back of the property they own?
Oh. Fosgate Road came to Gates Pond. And then because four ninety-five interrupted Fosgate and dead-ended it, and there was no way to get to Gates Pond, they built this parallel road to four ninety-five to allow access.
So they took that little piece of land as eminent domain or something to get the road in?
Yeah, they cut through.
This.
Both of them, yeah.
Well, this, this piece, yeah, must've gotten taken away.
Right.
So. Anyway. You got, what do you got at eight, you got eight fifteen? What's that, possible?
Land on Carter Street.
Oh, you can keep doing this one if you want.
And we still have, um.
Done.
Yeah, we have a hollow.
Is this all, uh?
Lynn?
Busconi's land or upset?
No, so.
Peach Orchard.
The twenty-six behind you got bought. And the nineteen probably got bought too. You, everything around Lynn has been acquired. Probably including this too. But we don't know what for. Neither does Lynn.
Lynn should make a phone call.
Well, there was rumor and conjecture that I shared with you.
Yeah.
But that's just rumor and conjecture.
So these two pieces here, we assume, got picked up.
Right.
But that's limited business and what else? Or are they both limited business?
These are both limited business.
Okay.
This one, I think, is still limited business. We were gonna try to take it out a long time ago, but we didn't. 'Cause, 'cause they asked us not to. I'll check that.
I think, isn't that, why is it, it's not colored that way, though?
No, but I think it's, I think that's.
Do you think it should be?
Yeah.
That map is right there on the, right there, bigger, if you wanna.
Yeah, this is the same thing.
Still the same thing.
There.
Yeah, I don't believe that's right. We changed, yeah, I don't know. 'Cause all of this was limited industrial and then we changed it to limited business, but we put these into ARC. Belong to, this was Town of Hudson, this is Town of Hudson.
That piece there?
Yeah, this is Town of Hudson. This was Faith. This is all Town of Hudson. So we, we, this one may have been picked up. Well, this would be, this may have been in different hands. This was Martin Continental or whatever. So that's different. So, yeah, maybe it's just those two, but Lynn will find out for us. Hmm, good.
Yep, and then there's also something going on with this lot, but that's irrelevant right now, that one.
Behind the?
Behind, uh, the, the blue house.
Behind the vet?
Yeah.
We believe that there's a purchase and sale on that stretch. What I did is I wrote to the petitioner. I don't usually question a lot of stuff, but I did notice that it was not listed as his property that he was showing the driveway.
Right.
So I sent him a note and said, you need to show interest in the property. And he got back and said he's sending it from his lawyer. I was hoping it was an easement.
Right.
But it doesn't appear that it is from what I hear.
It's a lot easier if it's an easement.
Yeah.
Might be cheaper too.
Yeah, I mean, you, making a nonconforming lot less conforming when it's a commercial use in a residential agricultural zone.
Is like all kinds of red flags.
Yeah, 'cause it is out of the commercial. Green area in a commercial zone's greater than it is in a residential, I mean, green area in a residential zone is a higher standard than it is in a residential, I mean, the commercial zone. Right?
So here, it is yellow. All of that.
Limited, limited business.
Right.
That'd be interesting to check too. That may be, that may be a mistake. I'll go back and look at the pieces that we, that was nineteen ninety-six, so.
That is?
The changes that we made here when that got pulled out of, out of, uh, commercial. It was nineteen ninety-six when we redid the zoning maps all over. 'Cause we redid the zoning bylaw and then we redid all the zoning maps and we confirmed the pieces that were gonna be in the, the updated zones. So, yeah, it may very well have been a town meeting that this piece got pulled out, but no one paid attention to that one.
Right.
That is a high probability, I would think. This little piece here, I think, belongs to the town.
Does.
Yeah, on the, on one of the maps. I think it was the zoning map that you just showed, showed it as part of the road.
Nope.
Yeah, so this.
But it shows the whole parcel.
Right, and Berlin Properties Realty Trust are the same people who used to own this. Think this property, if not all of those also.
But Berlin Property Realty Trust should be the, the gas station.
That's this one. This one's, shows Berlin Realty Trust, this one, so somewhere.
So what does it say on this one? Oh, Central Street LLC, yeah, okay, good. All right. Match, when? Your first meeting and match?
It's the eighth. It's either seven thirty or eight o'clock, and we have two of them, I don't know which time that is.
Well, we meet again, right, the twenty-eighth?
Right, yep, we do.
If you meet in person, 'cause he'll be in Hawaii.
We're not meeting in person.
So we can, we can discuss it and make a recommendation and if we have to, write a letter to the ZBA.
Yeah.
Prior to their meeting.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know how soon the purchase and sale would be executed. 'Cause he's been away from us for almost a year now.
Right.
Well, I mean, we can hypothesize that that's transpired and.
Not as of a few days ago.
No, but we can, we can conjecture, right?
Right.
'Cause we've seen a plan.
Right.
And it doesn't say there's an easement.
It also doesn't say he owns the property, though.
No, but if he was, if you think it would say there was an easement, it was.
Right.
Gonna follow that route, right?
For sure.
So we can check that out.
Right.
What are you gonna check out, Jim?
We're gonna, we're gonna assume that the purchase has, is, is in the works and that it's not an easement. 'Cause the plan doesn't show an easement. It, it suggests that there's ownership of this way across. So in our letter to you, we'll discuss what we think about.
Want to be used on that lot?
Yeah, and, and, and the impact of reducing the green area on a commercial use in a residential zone from X to Y, you know? Whatever, we can look at the map and see what the coverage is. The coverage is gonna be pretty significant in terms of impervious area.
Yeah, especially since they took the diesel and stuff and debt.
Right, with that loop road and all that stuff, so. Yeah, okay.
But there, there would be no way anyone would know if that lot was sold, because it is a separate lot. And other than this coming before the ZBA. But like you say, maybe there's some recommendations you could make to the ZBA as to what we should do going forward. That would be very helpful to us.
Well, I, concern, the bigger concern is, is that you're taking a, a nonconforming use and making it worse.
Right.
You know, which is, we've always gone against that.
Yeah, we don't expect people to come into full compliance, but we want them to move in the right direction.
Right, exactly.
And, and so if there was an easement on this property, that would reduce some of the green area, but you could, you probably would argue you could live with that, given the impact to this lot and its access to sixty-two.
Right.
Right, especially because the green area is just being reduced by the width of the driveway.
Right, and they could, they could end up developing this in such a way that with all the new approaches to driveways and impervious stuff.
Sure.
I mean, they could do some cool stuff.
Yep.
Rain gardens and, right?
Yep.
Impervious, what do you call them? Impervious pavers.
Impervious pavers, yeah.
Yeah, so. Which, you know, I mean, stormwater management guidelines in our bylaw need to be adopted sometime, right?
Right.
If Conservation would tell us what to do, we could just go ahead and do it.
Those people, they don't do anything.
Okay. Have we exhausted that?
Yeah.
But they, they could also, the gas station could also buy, buy some land behind them.
Right, they could do a land swap.
And they could do a swap with two seventy-five Central, right?
Um, if it, yeah, I mean, it, they, there's not a, they're not, it's different owners, so, right?
Well.
This, this is maybe owned by these guys back here, but.
Right, so I think he's talking about back here.
Oh, that there.
Yeah.
How big is that?
It says the whole lot.
It's only one point six.
It's one point six.
So it doesn't even conform.
Right.
Right.
It would, though, with this, probably.
Hmm, it would be closer.
Well, it was fourteen thousand.
This is thirty-six hundred square feet.
This is.
This is.
This is fourteen, didn't we say it was fourteen thousand in another map?
I don't think it's that big.
I was surprised.
Is it that big?
Well, I didn't think it could be, but I thought that's what I read, but my eyes aren't good anymore, so who knows? Assessors, maps, sixteen.
How large is the gas station park?
Twenty-four.
Acres?
There's fourteen thousand two hundred ninety-four square feet in, in that parcel.
Thirty-seven thousand oh five two.
Yeah.
It doesn't look right.
For the part that's where the gas station is.
Oh.
Not counting the little piece across the street.
How big's the little piece?
Little piece is fourteen thousand two hundred ninety-two. So I think this piece of, the other, do they show the property line?
Really? You think so?
Well, if you multiply this by two and a half, you'd end up with that piece.
But then, but.
They don't actually show the property line.
This is thirty-six, this is thirty-six hundred. Scale-wise, I mean, thirty-six hundred, that's fourteen thousand? So you're telling me that this is.
With this?
With the two of them together?
All the way to there, yeah.
Okay, all right, believe that.
From here to there, yeah. There, there's the interesting thing, though. The assessors' map don't show that as Berlin Properties, that's what you were just talking about.
Correct.
Right.
So why do they show it? They're getting that out of the registry, probably, huh? Why don't the assessors show that?
I'll look on the Mass GIS. It's harder on my phone, but.
Sixteen twenty-four, sixteen twenty-five. Top's going around.
I know.
So you're saying if they combine these two with that back piece, then it's gotta conform, it's a conforming lot?
That one would.
The back one. These two plus this.
Yeah, this is all of this, right?
Hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
And I don't even believe, that's the tree line.
No, that's not a map, yeah, that's not a.
So it's way back here. This lot goes all the way.
Okay.
Shooting back to, to rub up, rub up against Taylor.
Oh. And that was his complaint originally, coming out this way is too long of a way.
Yeah. But that's, I mean, I was assuming that this belonged to the town. And when you look at the fact that there's no wall there, you thought, well, maybe that was a, a barway for somebody to.
Right.
Get through it, at least.
It's really complicated. There's no easy solution.
No, same way. What's going on?
I wonder if they, oh, look at that, right there.
They're saying that's, yeah, but.
That that's part of this property.
The argument, I think, the argument is that, that when the road came through, this little tab got taken as part of the, the road.
Right.
I think that's what the assessors would say. But someone's assumed. But someone's assuming that it's still part of that, of the lot.
The gas station came after Taylor Road.
But the lot precedes it.
Right.
Right, hmm. Interesting.
I'll ask Molly.
Right.
I gotta go see Maureen anyway, so I'll see Molly, too. Okay.
So, that little rectangle is, does have a different owner than the gas station. This is ENI two sixty-five Central Street LLC, and the gas station, oh no, sorry. My bad.
Thanks, Joy.
Yeah. Apparently, reading isn't my strong suit tonight.
Well, you're in person, you know?
Right?
You're not comfortable like you are when you're at home.
Right.
What's our next?
We, you want to take stuff out of order? We got people?
Yeah, might as well, sure.
I mean, we don't need to... Sure.
Are they on the list?
I don't know, no.
No?
Not that I see.
We had a couple, we had a couple of questions by email that we wanted to get answered, too.
Okay.
You're, you're here for a piece of trust property?
Just, you have some questions?
Yeah. Some questions.
Okay.
I'm not sure how this works, so...
And then you're here...
Excuse me?
Behind you.
I'm just here, I'm...
Nothing else to do?
Are you sure you don't want a pepper and patty?
Maybe Valentine's Day.
Okay.
I was directed here by the group during the day.
Okay.
Okay.
I thought that Mr. Wheeler sent some kind of a email or document or something to somebody.
You went to the town clerk's office during the afternoon?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can take that up now.
Yeah, I mean, we can't act.
Come on, yeah, we, yeah.
We, we gotta be careful. You're not on the agenda, so...
Right.
The open meeting was suggested, we're not supposed to go too far with the conversation.
Maybe we can make this quick and I'll have to come back.
But we can throw ideas, we, we can't throw any ideas.
Piece of property.
That's interesting. So, does that, but McKelk? Oh geez, oh geez, I did it again.
So, it's behind the, the right away of the railroad, right?
Yeah.
Got it. Can you see that, Jan?
So, it's right next to Freddie's piece, right?
Right off where the Indian, the... The initial question, is this abandoned road?
Yeah, that one's abandoned in the eighteen eighties. We, we've looked at this a number of times over the years.
Yeah.
When the, when Route sixty, when the railroad came through and Route sixty-two was West Street was, was rerouted, that ended up being abandoned.
And nobody seemed to know whether, I just asked if I could drive over it or access that, if nobody seemed to know if it was sold to the Abutters or what the status was on it.
It's still showing as...
Come off the map.
Oh, no, that's the little one below it, yeah.
Is this, this where Phil Wheeler came to us ten years ago, fifteen years ago, or something like that?
I don't know if it was that one or the, or the, who wants?
Doesn't even show.
Who wants this one here?
How do you zoom out on this? I keep ruining it every time I try to.
What did you do?
Oh, you know what, maybe click the... There we go. Okay, so which one? Ah! See, that's what I keep doing.
What's your name, Lloyd?
Gary Parker.
Okay, so you're, you want to see who owns the...
So, you, you're the owner?
So, right, so you're the owner of this property.
So, it's a piece of trust property. The owners have passed away.
Okay.
And I'm trying to determine whether or not to pick it up.
Okay.
Yeah, so you're surrounded by Freddie's land, and then MD's, Boston and Main still owns that.
Yeah. That was interesting.
Yeah, I don't know if they had a water tower there or something, you know, I don't know what it was. They had a jog there in general, so there must have been something going on.
The family had always said there was some kind of access by this guy.
This is Paul McKelk, right? That's the McKelks' house?
Yeah, usually what we discover is there's, there's limited, if any, access across the railroad right away. And a lot of properties in town that have tried to get across, discover that if they have something, it's a cart path sort of thing, you know, it doesn't have any dimension.
I drove down the road down there, I drove down the road down there, though, and there's a new house across the railroad tracks right in, um, behind us, or...
Probably Harris.
Yep, and that was a, a town road that wasn't abandoned and continued to be a town road with, where, so they have frontage on Harris. That's how that house got built.
The West Street Trust Development got it.
They bought, right, but they had access. Their, their piece was on both sides of the railroad, whereas this one's only on the backside with no frontage on a, on a way. So, we, you, is your interest in trying to find, if possible, to build on it?
Um, I guess I would say, um, that obviously that would be an option. Not anything I'm probably going to do, but if I was to pick the property up, I'm sure somebody down the line would be.
Yeah, I think I'll...
That's why someone would want to buy it.
Yeah, yeah.
Not just to have a, a triangle of land in Berlin?
Graze your sheep.
Put a little, put a little tent on it.
Yeah, they just couldn't get, they couldn't get rid of it on the trust, so I'm trying to see if I have any options.
The trust tried to market it?
Um, I think the, not market it, but they did ask the Abutters if they were interested in buying it or picking it up.
I see.
And they were turned down by everybody.
Yeah. I imagine everybody, well, the, the Wheelers have asked about the piece next to it as a buildable parcel.
Yeah, yeah.
The explanation back years and years ago, when we did the discovery, was that it didn't have frontage.
Yeah.
So that, because that way had been discontinued. So, that helps explain why they wouldn't have said, yeah, we'll pick this up.
Right.
Two acres, huh?
But they, if this is twenty-three here, that's smaller than that, so you don't have enough access to that.
Right.
Even if this was a
Right.
You know, county road. I hate it's landlocked.
You know, we can't officially
Right.
Say anything, but we could take it up next time and review it again and have it on the agenda and stuff.
Take action.
Yeah, I mean, give them an, an opinion, anyway. Yeah, that's what I mean. Doesn't that make the most sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so unofficially, officially, if you want something, you're gonna have to come back.
About the, um, the initial question, that access down that discontinued road, is that can that be used, or is that off limits to...
Well, you don't have, what if you got, like, three feet of frontage on it or something like that?
Yeah, not much.
I mean, it doesn't even give you enough to have a driveway.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm thinking, you know, I don't, wood lot or something, I mean, could you...
An easement over there, or...
Yeah, if Wheelers, I mean, if, if Wheelers would give you an easement across theirs, then you could...
Who owns that road?
And is that road maintained at all?
Well, no.
Right.
I mean, often, like when Sawyer Hill was diverted in the, in the discontinued section of Sawyer Hill, you used to come down Sawyer Hill and go straight.
Right.
Now it's...
Now it's offset, yeah.
Offset. So, when that was discontinued, the piece that was discontinued at town meeting, my recollection is, we voted to
Flip, flip, flip.
Turn it over to Chetco. Because we were taking Chetco land here and we gave this. Now, when you discontinue, I can ask, I can ask, my, somehow my recollection is that discontinued ways somehow may be available to Abutters, but I'm not sure how that, whether the town has to take action to do that or not. We could find that out.
Then I was looking down the road to that lot. You mentioned that the railroad still owns, um, next to it. Whether there could be some potential access off of that?
Off the railroad right away?
Off the railroad lot, yeah. If you were able to pick that up. Or the gentleman down the road that got up and back there over the railroad tracks, is there any kind of access through there that you could purchase?
That's rocky through there, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, it, our... The Central Mass Rail Trail has eyes on that corridor.
Yeah.
Whether something will come to pass is still up in the air, but they're keenly interested because they realize that the missing link is right here. There's trails east of us and there's trails west of us that are significant networks and you know, trying to punch through. So, you know, there, there's been conversations in town about alternatives to this corridor. And you know, that conversation will continue, but in this case, you'd have to go across Wheeler and then across Boston and Main, and then Boston and Main. Yeah, right?
If you came through, yeah, the, that end.
That way, from Harris Road.
Right.
I guess initially there was some thinking that that discontinued road might somehow allow you access to that piece, but... And then there was some family talk about this gentleman that owns this house, that there was some kind of access beside his house or something that you can get in there. But I haven't been able to prove any of that.
Yeah, it just ends up being one of those pieces that ends up landlocked and
Yeah.
It was long enough ago, so the value of it was insignificant and you know, even if people were cutting wood off it, it probably wouldn't amount to much. So, maintaining access to it wasn't a high priority, and it, as a result, it stays landlocked and probably doesn't have much of an access, but we can poke around and see. I know I've got somewhere the language from the town meeting where it discontinued printed out, you know, and...
Is it passable, that discontinued road?
I don't know.
Have you ever...
Looked like it to me, I've, I've seen it.
You can drive up it?
I think so. But you know, there's a huge elevation of the rail bit, rail bit way up above.
Yeah, one of the gentlemen in the office down here actually took a ride up a couple of days ago and said that it looks like somebody has been using it, but, uh...
Homework.
That's all we can do for now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, how do I proceed?
To, if you want us to formally say something, then we need to get you on the agenda for next time. What's that, the twenty-eighth? My next meeting's the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I should show up on the twenty-eighth?
Uh...
Give him a time?
Yeah, let's give, do we have anybody on the twenty-eighth? We don't have anybody yet.
No, no.
Okay, why don't we say eight o'clock on the twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eighth, okay, thank you.
Yep, okay.
That's a good theory, right? Brown from group. Send you the questions from the person about Highland Commons.
What's the question?
Sign, well, there's a whole list of questions that Richard already answered about signage, but one of the questions that he didn't answer was
Thank you.
Is a band, a paint band around the building?
A paint band?
That counts as signage?
Highland Commons?
Yeah.
Is it around just one store? Or is it around the whole block of stores?
No, it's, I think she's working on one store.
Is this proposed or is it existing?
Proposed.
It's proposed.
They're working on the plans.
But it's just going to be a stripe around the building? It's not going to contain any
Logos or...
Logos, comments, copy?
Well, I'll mention that. Let's make, assume that.
Assume that it is.
Assume that there's nothing other than a paint band.
I mean, if it's a painted thing, we don't have any...
Right, I mean, it's no different than using a different color course of brick or something.
I mean, we want it in keeping with those tones that we...
Right, earth tones and
Yeah.
Natural tones, but...
We don't want neon green or something.
Right. Especially if the colors of the business are neon green.
Right.
That's when you start getting into, like...
Logos and branding.
Right.
Okay, well, signage is a foot and a half, square, one and a half square feet per foot of building frontage?
Mm-hmm.
Or ten percent of the wall area, whichever is less?
Right.
Okay. Are freestanding temporary signs permitted?
Temporary?
Temporary, yeah. There's for certain...
What are you talking about, temporary as in a sandwich sign that sits out front while we're open?
Or ban a saying under new management?
Right, while they wait for their permanent sign?
Usually we had said thirty days.
Yeah. Thirty days?
Yeah, usually, that's what you say.
Okay. That's it. Succumb.
They're really good.
I bet, if we don't meet together more often.
Mm-hmm. Mm, they are good. Did you make these? Very nice.
Well, I was making supper, and then I said, you know, I should make some brownies. And I started thinking about that and getting, and Janet said, you finish supper, I'll make the brownies. So, I said, okay.
So, supper was brownies?
Yeah. The other half of the pan.
There's a few brownies left at home. And James gets... There's a few brownies left at home when James gets some, so. So it worked out and we didn't have to eat a whole tray, we just had a few or something.
Right, that's the worst part about making them.
Yeah.
Do you need a permit for the temporary sign?
They gotta check in with the building inspector.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, 'cause you gotta start and stop at a certain date. I could let them self-police for them.
There you go. Right.
So you wanna discuss Carter Street?
I do. I'm gonna do that next.
All right.
You wanna give us an overview?
Yeah, so the owners of 72 Carter wanna sell their...
Sell what this is?
Eight and a half acres.
Seven, eight and a half, 8.5 acres.
Sell what this is?
Probably not.
100 Carter Street?
No.
I don't know, it's different.
I don't know what's that.
I'll have to look at that, too.
Yeah.
Eight and a half acres. And it goes from Carter Street across from Wheeler's Garage with 200 feet of frontage up the hill.
Mm-hmm.
But probably not to the peak, um, because there's another seven and a half acre parcel that comes off of Carter Street across from the library.
Woodward.
Carter, from the library.
Oh, I thought they were on Woodward, sorry. Go ahead.
Their address may be, huh, you may be, no, I think their, I think their address is Carter. You're there, so you can look it up.
Get my magic map. Oh, you are correct.
Well, who knows? I think it's Carter, anyway.
Right, yeah.
So, the Carter Street...
So it's this?
This is six and a half acres.
Yep.
This is six and a half, this is...
Eight.
This is seven and a half, this is eight and a half. This has got 200 feet of frontage and a house.
Mm-hmm.
It's for sale. So, um, we began to talk about trying to use CPA money, some from open space and some from housing, to acquire the property. And then and for a while we talked about how would you create an additional lot? It might be flipped to Habitat or somebody like that, so they could build an affordable unit. And then take the unit that's there and, and put some sort of deed rider on it that would keep it affordable as well.
How are you gonna do that?
Well...
I shouldn't have frontage.
You'd, you'd end up having to create a way.
Right, okay.
And we've seen people create ways that don't end up being town ways, you know, accepted as town roads, but built to certain specs to achieve the, the frontage requirement. But we sort of, we've begun to back away from that just 'cause the cost and the complexity, it just gets too crazy.
And we don't real, if, if the housing trust was like up and running for 10 years,
Yeah.
that would be a different, we would have the kind of bones of how to do something like that.
Right. So, if you go on to the consu, the Community Preservation Act Consortium's website, you can see where towns have paid for a deed rider on a parcel to make it permanently affordable.
Like buying a conservation restriction.
You're buying the rights.
Yeah, so you buy down some of the value and say, we want it to sell at this price.
Yeah.
It may be that it's $400,000 for the parcel, and then there's obviously gonna be some miscellaneous costs in addition. If you took $100,000 out of open space, then you'd need $300,000. We talked about using some of the mitigation money from Housing Partnership, you know, maybe 50. Now you need 250. Is there value in the, the house that you could recoup to CPA? I mean, you'd, you'd sell off the two acres in the house to somebody, but you'd have to sell it for a low enough price so whatever they put into it in their profit left them at that, below that threshold for an affordable unit. And that gets...
Tough numbers right now.
Complex, too.
Right.
So, then today I began to chat with, um, folks from the Assabit Regional Housing Consortium, and I said, what if we approached the homeowner now and say, here's X amount for the open space and here's X amount for a deed restriction and you...
Sell the house.
You sell the house. What, what would, what would that amount from the housing money, community housing money and CPA need to be in order to, to bring that down? So that's one avenue. And I suspect that's gonna be complex, 'cause I don't think the numbers will...
Of course, that's gonna work, probably.
Right. So then, the next option is to say, how much can they sell the house for on the market as is, less the six and a half acres? And how much would we need to pay to acquire the six and a half acres to leave them whole or ahead of the game a little bit, you know? I mean, if they want four and they could get a little more than four out of it by taking the longer route of subdividing, creating the two acre lot and then selling that. So that's the question that we're at now. So I think we'll probably chat with James Poliok and say, here are a couple of things we wanna explore.
Right, give us some numbers. What's the market like right now? What?
What would it demand?
What makes sense, what's realistic?
Yeah. 'Cause the opportunity to protect that open space is real, um, and it does, this opportunity isn't gonna come up again, obviously, and...
So it wouldn't be who you to buy it for open space for the whole nut and knock the house down and be done with it?
$400,000? We don't have $400,000 in CPA for open space right now. 'Cause the eight, eight and a half thousand, 850,000, that's 854, 857, 864.
874.
874,000's coming back from the state. And the, and we may get that money before the end of the fiscal year, but because it's not certified, it isn't available to be utilized for any CPA projects until probably late August or September.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
I like the idea of trying to buy the land and leave the, stay out of the housing business.
Right, but, but $400,000 for eight acres from a conservation perspective.
It's a lot.
Exactly, I mean, we paid 1.15 for 100 acres.
Yeah, you were paying, you were paying 10 an acre, right?
Right, right, and even that, we got the, got, well, we got the hairy eyeball, we were like, they were, you know, why are you spending that much money? So I think that would be a harder, um, certainly a harder ask at town meeting.
Seems like it shouldn't be that much anyways, since I don't think it's gonna, I don't think it's worth that much if they have to develop it in order to make it even saleable as a building lot.
The additional land? Yeah, that's, that's the trick.
That's expensive to do that.
Well, they'd have to punch a road in just like we were talking and...
And, and, you know, we've got that plan from years ago that proposed two house lots and the house lot for the house that's there, so it would be three, three lots. And you'd end up with two good sized lots up the slope. And, you know, I mean, you, the impact on that neighborhood would be significant. I mean, everybody's living on a fairly small lot, if you can protect that open space and it becomes town land, then...
Right, you put well on it for the town center.
Yeah.
And, um, the opportunity to work with Weidemann's and Faith, um, at some point to get either easements across or acquire some land from Weidemann, you know, whatever, I mean, it's, those are real possibilities. So, yeah, so then, then you go from Harris Road coming off of Highland Ridge and go up to this property and end up at the 1870 Town Hall and, like you say, you know, the possibility of a well or, you know, whatever, so.
Right.
It seems, it would seem short sighted not to keep exploring it a little more.
Oh, no, I, I, I agree with you.
So there's an article on the warrant that, you know, talks about moving forward. That, that, you know, can be modified in a number of different ways. And, and so we'll just keep doing some more homework, but that's...
Has anybody looked at whether you could even put septic on that property, since it's basically bedrock?
Well...
I mean, is it, is it all rock down that far or is it only at the top?
My, I, I don't, I don't know what's there. It always concerns me when we speculate that a piece might not...
Be buildable.
Be buildable, 'cause technology's gonna change.
And we've all seen, we've all seen lots be built on that we were convinced...
With a five gallon bucket of sand and a shovel that can get a lot of things to perk.
Yep, yep, right, so, so, so using that argument, well, maybe, maybe not, I have no idea. But I, I, I don't feel comfortable saying, oh, that can never be built on.
Right.
'Cause...
Yeah, 'cause we've been...
We've been...
We've been very wrong.
Been surprised before.
Yeah.
So that's the update on that one. We'll update you more next time.
Okay.
He will, I won't.
That's true. Okay. Uh, that's that one. Do we wanna talk about the CMR PC, hiring a regional housing coordinator?
Sure. So, um, Central Mass is the recipient of a grant that's gonna allow them to bring a, a regional housing coordinator online for a year. And they would like to find five or six towns that would be interested in continuing a relationship with that housing coordinator for an additional two years after. So it'd be a three-year relationship. And we began to talk at CPA about the benefit to the housing trust. So, the housing trust has been posted at the, in the census flyer that got mailed to every household and it's been posted by the select board. And we've, there, there's one select board member that gets appointed and four other individuals. And, and there are, to my knowledge anyway, four other individuals and maybe more that are interested. So, it's likely that the, the committee would be, the, the trust membership would be appointed, you know, maybe by the early part of March. And they have a lot of catch-up to do. I mean, they, they probably have to create a series of bylaws and then procedures, and some of that has to probably come to town meeting, maybe in the fall, maybe next year if there's no fall town meeting. And then they have to explore all these different opportunities that are out there for the use of CPA money and some of the mitigation money that's sitting in the Housing Partnership in our hands. So, it seemed like we could jumpstart that process if, if we joined in on this activity. So, you look at the contract and the first year is free, so we don't pay anything. But the second and third year, the total would probably be somewhere around $30,000 for the two years and you'd probably get...
The town's participation, it'd be that much?
It'd be 15 a year.
Okay.
So essentially it's 10 a year for
Sure.
three years. And you end up with four or five hours a week of this person, so it's, it's pretty steep. But Central Mass is, I mean, they've gotta work under state contract rules and regs, so, you know, their indirect costs and, you know, the benefit, they're paying somebody 65 to 70 to do the job, but they end up almost doubling the cost, so.
And it's five towns, right?
There's five.
That, that, they're only going to accept five towns for this.
Yeah.
So are we gonna be one of them?
Right. So how does that dovetail into the, um, housing, Assabit?
So Assabit manages our subsidized housing inventory.
Right.
And they'd continue to do that.
Okay.
And that's costing us around six a year.
Right.
And then, you know, they'd give us guidance on certain issues if we needed it.
So this initiative is completely different than that?
This is really someone that's gonna be working dedicated to the town four or five hours a week and focused on, I mean, to me, it's, it's, the timing is nice because you, you, you finish the production plan, the production plan, you formulate the, um, housing trust and then you give them four or five hours a week of someone to work on implementing what we design into the plan and, and...
Help get the housing trust off the ground.
And they've got, the housing trust is gonna have, if we don't spend any money on Carter Street, I mean, they're gonna have 250, probably have half a million dollars. And, you know, there's...
Is that counting CPA?
Yeah. So if you look at the opportunities, I, I kept throwing ideas at, with people. I said, I talked to the Habitat for Humanity Director for North Central Massachusetts yesterday for a while. And she reached out to Kristen a couple of months ago and said, does Berlin interest in working with Habitat? And so when I started talking about this, Kristen said, well, Habitat wants to work with us. And I said, okay, so I called her.
You got more than, than that.
Is it?
Yeah.
What you got?
You got, you got north of, you got, it's a 550, yeah, about 550.
She's got, so then she's got another 250, so she's got 750, there's 750,000. I mean, we wanna be realistic about how to expend it, and that's where I think this housing coordinator comes in and says, here's what we see in other towns, you know, here's what you can accomplish, here's how to get the most bang for your buck. 'Cause, you know, if, if you think about, well, I said to the, both people, I talked to Assabit housing people today and I talked to, um, North Central Habitat yesterday. And I said, how do you, how do you determine what's reasonable? I mean, if you wanna just protect one single family home, what's a reasonable amount of money to spend? And I see other towns spending 100, 125,000 to, to create an affordable unit through their participation in either Habitat or other people. And I said, that, you know, I can, I see, you know, and this is public, right? Here we go, so you go to town meeting, you say, wanna spend 125,000 to, you know, to create one affordable unit. And people scratch their heads and say, well, how do you justify that?
Right.
Well, both these groups say, you don't understand what homeownership does. It, it brings people into a position where they have equity, they end up, it changes their life so completely. Their kids end up in a potential going to college.
Yep.
I mean, it just changes everything.
Yes.
And, and the burden on society when people don't have that is so significant that if you look at those long-term costs and you weigh it against your 100,000, it's money well spent. And so, you know, I mean, that's the argument, I guess.
But is the, is the, is it, and we don't have to get into this now for the debate, but is it better as a, as a single family dwelling versus, um...
I think we'd be better off taking a, you know, I'm arguing against myself, but I think this is how I've evolved. I think we're better off looking at an opportunity to take a tax title piece
Agreed.
And saying to Habitat, here's the land and here's $100,000, put a duplex on this and both units would be affordable. And then you, you know... And then you, you know.
Right.
And, and I think, I said to Habitat, but we don't have water in surge. And they said, and that's true. They said, we used to just stay away from small towns. But they said now over, well, she said over 50% of their projects are in towns without water and surge. And the.
It surprises me.
And the folks from Asabit were saying, I mean, she's Metro West Development Corp. or whatever. She said. This, this whole integration of affordable units into the fabric of the community rather than specialized 40B project.
Sure.
Is so much more positive an experience.
Sure, oh, absolutely. Because it's not like, oh, those are the kids that live in the, in.
Exactly.
In those, in the apartments or whatever, you know, the, yeah.
Yeah, the stigma is there.
So, but then I said, so how much did we do with rental assistance? So I mean, how much impact would we have in that? And they said, that's good, but it doesn't have the same long-term effect. Someone's renting, 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 it doesn't move them up.
Right.
And they're not putting roots in the community either.
Right. So she said, those programs are important, you know. During COVID, a lot of towns that had CPA money were helping people with rental assistance to try to get through.
There's a lot of state money for that already too.
Yeah. And that's the other thing. I think this housing coordinator can help us identify ways to leverage our money with state grants. That we might have to match in some way, but to use some CPA money to extend the impact, you know, that sort of thing, so.
Right, because there's so many programs.
Oh, yeah.
Out there that, you know, that we could take advantage of.
And Central Mass got another pool of money. So the, the fiscal development committee, which I'm on, at the, at the planning commission. Has DLTA, District Local Technical Assistance money that we've utilized sometimes in the past. But this year they've got another 175,000 they have to spend in the next year and a half. To help towns in writing grants for federal money, but also state. But it's, it's to turn us into the opportunity to tackle some of that federal money that we often don't even realize is there. So the, the fact that the commission's got people paying attention to that. And then we have this link to a housing coordinator that would be privy to that information and sort of streamline the process. So it's, you know, it's $30,000. It'd probably be 10 out of CPA for the second and third year, 10 each year. And, and then I thought, you know, maybe five out of the housing partnership money each year. And that gives you the, the wherewithal to.
And it's a three-year commitment and can, does it extend after, longer than that if we want?
Well, it could, but you know, what you see is that towns use CPA money that's for community housing for an internal coordinator.
Right.
And, and that might very well be something that you could, I mean, right now CPA has a part-time person working eight hours a week on CPA business. And lots of times you see the housing coordinator and the CPA coordinator being the same person. So down the road, you know, we might marry those two together and use CPA money for that whole ticket. And, and leave Central Mass behind. Because that, I mean, it is, it's, it's a lot of money. But the, the housing trust by then would have its legs in.
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
And there'd be a, a general understanding in the town about some of the objectives. I think the, the, the housing trust, through the bylaws they create and some of the work they do. And maybe some of the things is, hopefully they come on soon enough so they could participate in some of our finalized discussions about the housing production plan in terms of long-term objectives. And then they can just keep sweeping along on those, so.
Yeah, Maureen's been great for CPA. You know, we, we did a fair to middling job for the first year. But she's like, oh, no, this is how you have to do it. And we're like, oh, yeah, that makes sense. And because she has experience from other towns, working with CPA. And no, this is how you do it, this is, and just kind of reining us in a little bit and structuring us, let's say.
Well, and she's going to be certified for procurement. So. The applications that we get from town committees and boards and stuff will be driven by a lot more information on her part going, going forward. So they'll be able to come to the table with far more complete proposals than they've done so far.
Yeah.
And that would be, to me, that would be true with this housing thing too. So I just, I just see it as an opportunity to, to let this trust really take off.
Awesome.
Especially, you know, I, I didn't realize it was that much money. I mean, it's a lot of money.
Yeah.
And we want to use it smart.
Right, exactly, because once you spend it, it's gone.
Right, so spending 20 out of the CPA and 10 out of the partnership. Seems like small dollars to be really bright and, and on target with how we spend any of that money.
What do you have to do to get that to happen?
Well, Kristen and I have both said to Central Mass, we'll continue to, you know, delve into this and have discussions. CPA has voted to put it on the warrant for use of CPA money up to, you know. But I wanted to ask the planning board if we're comfortable. Eloise is good with the notion of spending, you know, five a year for the second and the third years.
Want to take a vote?
Yeah, probably good because then I, you know, then we can really say to Central Mass.
Yeah, we took a vote, so.
So, I mean, I, I moved that we expend 5,000 in fiscal 25 and 5,000 in fiscal 26. For part of the cost of contracting with Central Mass to provide us with a housing coordinator.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thanks.
There you go.
Nice.
Nice.
Yeah, I.
I think it's money well spent. I think it'll help.
I agree.
Get the, and, you know, where the housing trust is volunteers, if, there's a much better chance of retaining those volunteers. If there's a path, exactly, someone to help.
They've got a lot of responsibility. I mean, they can, they can acquire property, they can sell property. Yeah, I mean, there's a ton of stuff. There's a cap.
Oh, yeah.
You know, they can only commit to like 200,000 and then, but you know, still. And then, then they have to work with the select board to, if they want to go more than that.
But that's kind of the whole point, the whole, now that we have CPA funds dedicated to affordable housing, we need a way to use those funds.
Right.
So that's why it makes sense to have the trust.
Yep.
I mean, we're.
I think giving them the best foundation we can is kind of our responsibility.
We're at, you know, we're over 16% on our subsidized housing inventory. But. 63 of those units don't, aren't really affordable. They're the apartments that are part of the block of 84, but only 21 are affordable. So if you deduct those 64, let's say that we've got, you know, 205 affordable units in, in town right now. Really, you've only got 140. Let's say you've got 160. Well, let's say we've got 1,600 totally, you know, housing units in town.
It's 160.
That means we need 160, so we're actually 20 short.
Right.
I mean, we're not the way they play this game.
Right, exactly.
But that may not last forever because it seems so bizarre.
Well, it should be grandfathered in because you'd have a lot of towns that would howl about Framingham and Natick.
Right.
Some of those guys would really howl.
All those towns east of us that are.
Counting on that.
They obviously built that into the legislation in the beginning because it was going to be a bonus.
They needed a carrot.
Mm-hmm.
Well, they may not change it, but then they may come up with a new program.
Right, going forward, right.
So it's prudent for us to look for opportunities to pick up a unit here and there.
Right.
And utilizing this, because we don't want to go back to being at the whim of 40Bs. Even though the ZBA deserves it, you know. We, we need, we need to protect them, right? You appreciate it. So, I mean, we've done our part, but it's not over. I mean, that's the trouble, so.
Exactly. You took your victory lap, now we'll get back on the truck.
Right.
So, little, I mean, looking at tax title pieces, working with Habitat, you know. So, yeah, there's ways to be proactive. And we should go back. I, you know, we've got the two subdivisions we just did. Those have been on the works for years, right? I mean, we approved those in 2020, didn't we?
The Carter Street?
The West Street and the, and the Peachill Road?
Oh.
Those subdivisions.
Actually, I think.
Maybe even before, because we did it in person, didn't we? Yeah, because Dan Wolf came into the meetings.
Those were two, two years, the West Street was two years ago.
Yeah, at least two years, probably more.
Yeah, I think, I think.
We may have finished it up, but Dan Wolf was sitting here at the table presenting plans back before COVID, so.
Right, because they had to go through all of that, all of whatever they had to go through to buy that piece from the railroad to get access.
So there's no, there's no subdivisions, to my knowledge, on, in the works right now.
Right, what's that? And, and I don't know, I need to look. There was a, a filing for, so you know where the vet is, Wilson's. The blue house right next to it. Property up behind there. We had an, um, RDA request for determination of applicability. So they mapped out all the wetlands up there. And now there's a new filing. I just saw it come through yesterday. So I don't, I haven't looked at it, so I don't know what's going on up there. What they're looking to do, but they're looking to do something. Sorry, Lynn. Seems like your neck of the woods is the, the focus right now. Almost every, all the.
Wow.
Yeah, there you go.
You could have a really cool ATV racetrack around the wetlands.
Yeah, there you go. Dirt bikes. Dirt bikes, Walter would love that.
Snowmobiles winter, dirt bikes.
When you have snow.
Yeah.
So I don't know yet what it is, but.
Is that limited business?
I don't think so. Oh, that's a fair question though, isn't it?
That's the forum.
No, residential.
Yeah, I thought so. So it's this.
Yeah.
I think it crosses over to like.
Okay, so does that, um.
That's enough update on the trust.
Does that include the housing trust update too?
Yeah.
They're together?
Okay. They go hand in hand.
Okay, so now, all righty, then we're Center Village Forum for Thursday. It's going to be here?
It's going to be in the room at the end.
Yep.
Carrie's all set. She got in touch with Cable Access and they said, yep, and.
That's at 7:00 PM, right?
7:00 PM.
Okay.
I'll bring a projector. What else do we need?
I'll bring my laptop just in case we need one for the hybrid portion of it.
We've got a Zoom link.
Right.
It's posted as a hybrid.
Do we want to ask Mary to post it on the town Facebook page and?
We were sort of focusing on town officials this time.
Okay.
Right. Maybe we should just let it play that way. I know, I mean, other people are coming. Ed's coming from the store and stuff.
Do you have any idea how many people are going to come in total?
No, they didn't ask for, you know, people that reserve space or anything. I, you know, I'm 30 maybe. I wouldn't think it'd be many more than that, would you?
Yeah, I have, it's so hard to tell.
Sounds like a lot, unless you personally.
30 people would be nice.
Right.
Yeah.
Most of the people that came last time were invited personally.
Yeah.
Right.
And I think some of them will show up again. MJ's, MJ's coming, Ed's coming.
I think James is coming also, James will.
Good. And so Carrie will go through the same program and then open it up for discussion again. That will be good.
Cool.
Awesome.
That's everything on the agenda.
Emily's sending an email saying, can she get on our next agenda?
Okay.
So that.
So how long do you think Carrie will need for 15 minutes?
Yeah, I wouldn't think much.
All right, let's put her on for 8:15 then.
Want me to email her?
Yes, please. Can you put that in the minutes so we capture that? 8:15 next meeting. Emily, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, Emily wants to come.
Yeah, and I think between now and then, if any of us have a chance to review those goals from the last subsidized housing plan. Because she sent us a, sort of a listing of, of what we had projected as goals the last time. I can, I can send that around to everybody again.
I don't think I got her final report and notes from the last forum because I wanted to post them on the website. But I never got them. I think I should ask her for them.
So she's got, was it table? Did you see it?
I haven't. She may have sent it to my old email.
We'll send it to your new one.
Yes, please.
It's a table that includes, you know, all the goals that we listed in the other one. And said, you know, have you accomplished any of these? Which ones do you want to keep on?
Right.
Are there new ones you want to add, that sort of thing, so. And I think it talked about a housing trust, it talked about, yeah, stuff like that.
I remember seeing it.
So I would think that she'd want a little extra, I mean, you know, maybe half an hour so we could
Okay.
sort of go through those. So she had an idea as to how to include stuff in the plan going forward.
Okay.
I got an email from someone who wants to be, who I guess consults for people developing units that have affordable components in them, et cetera.
And what do they want to be?
What's their names?
S E B Housing Needham.
S E B Housing in Needham.
It's a long email or I would read it.
Are they soliciting us to hire them as consultants? Like what, what's the gist of the email?
Who signed it?
Catherine Kaplan. It sounds more like whether the developer ultimately hires us or another agent to assist them in running a lottery and qualifying applicants.
Oh, yeah.
Right, so they want us.
Get through that consortium, yeah.
Yeah, we're doing that already.
We want to have that done already.
Yeah. Yeah, what happens with us is DHCD helps run lotteries for us. But the consortium is the one who monitors the SHI. And they're the, they've been sending out letters to all the people that are in affordable units in town at the beginning of the year. Just getting updated as to, you know, their status and stuff like that. Because they're supposed to be monitoring these units to make sure that they're, that someone hasn't sold them, you know. That's the other tricky part about a unit that you build. If, if you participate in the construction of an affordable unit and it's subsidized and it's on the subsidized housing inventory, that homeowner can't sell it to their kids. They've got a. They've got a, it's got to go into the lottery. Which makes it tricky.
Sure.
Will also make sense.
Yeah. But, you know, it's you wonder if down the road it might be some ways
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, you've got to be careful. That's where having somebody like Subri, I mean, the consortium helping us, Assetment helping us.
Right.
Really, because we don't want to be losing units. When we lost four and then the state, the group home, they, they only call that two now instead of four, so, I mean, we've all four, all six haven't come off the SHI, but they, eventually they will, you know, and that, boy, that's sixty units of housing when you lose six units.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah. That's hell. So, yeah, we've just got to be diligent.
Yep.
It's too much, it's so much nicer having control.
Yes. Yeah, I was talking to Glenn's aunt, lives in Harvard, and I guess there was a proposal for like two hundred and thirty units along Route Two in Harvard.
Yeah.
And they're all up in arms.
I think it's still Harvard. The, if you went out one eleven before you get to the Rotary and on two A?
Yeah.
In Air. Did you see the, the, it must be affordable units, the cluster ones that they put in there?
No.
Who said?
On the left across from Dunkin' Donuts, just after two, is that where it is?
It's not, no, it's, it's further down. It's almost the way you get to the Rotary and, and, and Air.
There's a big new gas station on the right.
Before you get to it.
So after Doe
So which way are you coming?
So if you're coming north
If you're going from Harvard to Air
Air, and you pass the orchard on that corner.
Yeah, yeah, way down, way further.
Oh, I know who you're talking about. If they left, there's a house there they haven't knocked down yet.
They, they haven't knocked it down yet, but in the back. Yeah, and, and they, oh my gosh, drive in there. They are literally from here to that wall away from one another and a giant
It must be Harvard, though.
It's still Harvard, it has to be. Because I think
They're way below their number.
That, well, that's what I figured.
And they're an MBTA community, an adjacent MBTA
Oh, that's even worse.
Yeah.
So, well, in, when those, in the MBTA communities have to come up with a plan of how they're gonna meet the numbers, but they don't have to fulfill the plan necessarily, but at least they've got to identify the parcel land and how many units and all that stuff. So, yeah, we're in the donut.
This is, this, this is just, if you have a chance, if you're driving up there some of the time, swing through. It is like, oh my goodness.
And you said they're
How old did this ever get put in?
They're huge, like multifamily?
No, so they're like long, skinny, so they could get them on us. There's like, there's like four rows of them. Four buildings wide.
How many units in each one, do you think?
It's probably two in each one. Because it, because it's so long, I'm guessing there's a front and a back to it.
Right.
Yeah.
And it's just atrocious. All the same, all the same color, all the same, everything. It's just like you're plunk, 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 plunk.
Right.
It's like, ah, man.
The consortium's got Littleton, Devon, Foxborough, Hudson, Stowe, Bolton, Harvard, Burling. So that's it. Stowe, Harvard, Littleton, and Bolton all have big, two hundred plus housing projects being proposed right now. In Stowe, it's on the golf courses.
Yes.
Yep.
And then
Part of the golf course.
Yeah, part of, and then, then Bolton's over off of one seventeen by Fairleigh or whatever it was.
Yeah, right.
Harvard's this one, but, and there's another one in Harvard, too, because they, and then Lancaster's got stuff, too. Lancaster just passed a forty R provision. So out on seventy, almost to the Route Two there.
Yeah.
There's a big project, yeah, with multiple, multiple, multiple units. And then Littleton, one of the, who went out? One of the big tech companies vacated one of those spots and, and there's housing and, I mean, there's some big, I mean, I think they're talking about like three or four hundred units.
Whoa.
Wow, oh my gosh, can you imagine what a change that would be in town?
Yeah.
It'd be insane.
It would be insane.
See, I was thinking it was crazy that this is what, this is what happened as a result of the whole forty B law, right? Because the expectation was somehow we were going to get affordable housing, but instead we got these three thousand dollar a month Yeah. two bedrooms, right?
Right.
I was thinking, so you completely missed the goal, but then, except for the, the ten percent affordable ones.
Right.
But I think what's gonna happen, if it keeps going on, is there's gonna be a glut. In fact, there already is. It's already getting hard to rent up at that price point. So what'll happen is the prices eventually will come down.
Right.
When they, when those come down, the layer below, you know, the two or three units in an old house in Hudson will, all that probably get pushed down.
Right.
I would think.
Huh.
Yeah.
I don't think it's gonna be as far as you think.
What, I mean, what do you think's gonna happen? Because what's, what we build here is being replicated in every town up and down four ninety-five, what we're talking about, right? And, you know, last time I tried to rent a unit for three grand, it took me three months to find some.
How many bedrooms? How many bedrooms, three?
Yeah. So, what's gonna happen? Because you're gonna excess inventory of
Sure.
units at that price point.
Well, according to everybody at the state, we're like a half a million units deficit across the state anyway.
But I think it's, it's affordable, it's like real affordable. It's a thousand to fifteen hundred
Yeah.
a month type. I mean, at that price point, you can't find anything anywhere, some stuff.
Right.
You can't build it without it.
That's the problem. No, it has to be existing, older homes.
Exactly.
Older apartment buildings, things like that.
Yep.
It's weird.
The lottery for the Highland Ridge is closing right now, I think.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, because none of those affordable units have, have moved because the lottery is just happening now.
I see. And how, I mean, how successful has the lottery been? I haven't seen it advertised at all, like, how
Well, Mark hadn't had any trouble down here on South Street, and Mark hasn't had trouble with any of his other previous
Right.
units, so, I mean
So they're getting to the right people.
It sounds to me like people are showing up. I talked to Stephanie today about it, and I said, you know, I'm concerned because I heard that there weren't units, and she looked up and she said, well, they're not gonna be selling them if they haven't done the lottery yet. And I said, oh, okay. So relax.
What's the, do you know the prices of the affordable ones?
They've got to be around two eighty, right?
Less.
Oh.
I think it's less. Some are at sixty percent.
Oh, nice.
I don't think they're all at eighty percent.
I thought the
I think there's
the non-subsidized ones are up at six hundred or something.
Yeah.
But the subsidized ones are gonna be in, maybe Stephanie's gonna send me numbers for what a home has to sell for in, in our subregion.
Right.
Worcester.
Right, and I thought that was around two eighty. I thought that was the preliminary number that you had. Yep.
So housing, we've been thinking about housing for a long time. I think we're in, in better shape than we've ever been, though, so.
I was looking through the minutes because I was, I've been taking all the minutes putting a giant file together so I could search it. And when I first started taking the minutes, it was two and a half years ago, right? And we were, Ron was promoting, and we were starting to talk about affordable housing at a lot of the meetings.
Yeah.
But now it seems like we really have made some progress. If what you're working on now comes to pass.
Yeah, now
I think it makes a lot of sense.
The thing about this housing coordinator is they don't have to just focus on affordability, I wouldn't think. And, and there's, because there's big A and little a affordable, and that's where the possibility of thinking more proactively about workforce housing.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So
Did you guys read the article about tiny homes that Tim sent around?
I sent it to you, but I didn't send it to anybody else.
Oh, it was great. You sent it to everybody, yeah.
I'm not always fluent in that, but, so you got it?
I can forward it, yeah, I read it. It was very interesting, yeah.
Yeah.
This, it was a big conference, you know, big exposition, yeah.
Where people showed up with these, these houses that were folded up in a box and you can put them together.
Just add one.
Hinges, right, yeah.
Make it, make it on your CNC.
Very cleverly laid out inside to take advantage of a little bit of space and you put everything you need in it.
And I thought
Cheap fifty, fifty-five thousand, I think, was what it was.
Yeah, I mean, I thought, hmm, tiny houses.
How does it work on a two hundred, two hundred thousand dollar lot and thirty thousand dollar well? Sixty thousand dollar septic system.
Two acres of the house.
Exactly.
It's too bad that shared wells and septics cost so much.
Right, tiny houses and, and workforce housing and, you know, I mean, this, the housing coordinator could probably because that's small A affordable, but I still, you know, it should be in their wheelhouse, too. Why not?
We really need to think about duplexes. It's the big hole we've got at the moment.
Yeah, now, when you look at the survey, the survey said, right?
Survey said.
Duplexes were low on that list.
Accessory units were, was one of the higher categories.
Actually, and that's what's going on in California.
Yeah, I heard about that, too, yeah.
Enabled by the state, that is another
Yep.
That's where some of those tiny houses are going.
Right, they're dropping the tiny house in the backyard.
Your mother-in-law in there.
Yeah. Lock the door.
Chicken coop in the backyard.
So
And then you could share the septic, presumably, right?
We only have one person on it.
Yeah, if you're only adding one bedroom, then the system will provide, right?
Or maybe expand it or something.
So, no, that, this, this, there's a guy from Devon's named Peter who's on the consortium, and Devon's has got the builder, Greenborough or whatever, that did the
Concord.
Concord stuff.
Yep.
And so I was gonna say to Peter
Told you they just won the award to
Yeah.
And was it Needham or?
Yeah.
Yeah, that I sent you this stuff.
So I think
For affordable housing?
They're doing the same thing that they've done in Concord and in, in Devon's.
Right, but they're
The town had a piece of property and they put out a RFP for proposals.
Yeah.
They had like twenty people and they granted it to this guy.
Yeah.
Right.
So, if, and Kristin is still saying, she hears us when we talk about that River Run piece as a potential site because of the water and stuff for, for a project.
Right.
So, you know, it might very well be that we could put out a request and pull in some people, but I thought it'd be nice to have a conversation with this guy ahead of time, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Again, with the housing coordinator, you might very well say, you know, pull together some people to give us a little presentation and Yeah.
Yep.
I like it.
I do, too.
Yeah. Makes you feel good.
I ran out of emails to respond to, so.
Good.
You went through the pile of paper, Brad.
We went through the pile of paper. So, I think that's about it. Do you have anything? You sat here all night long.
No, we
Did you have a brownie at least?
Oh, I had a brownie, thank you. It was very good. We've been trying to, like, have liaisons with the conservation and with you folks so that we do have some communication back and forth, so that when things arise, you're aware of them and we're aware of them.
Got it.
And thank you, Tim, for being the unofficial liaison.
Hey, she's got my number. I don't have any choice.
And Louise still attends your meetings for conservation, yeah.
She does.
Yep.
Uh-oh. Sounds like, sounds like someone from Planning Board ought to be going to their meeting. Oh, maybe we could hire Louise to do for us, too.
Right, maybe.
Wear two hats at the same time. All right, we're taking, I'll take a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.